All right. We welcome all to this meeting of the school board. The mission statement for the Lake Mills area school district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. The verification of the meeting notice, has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
All right. With that, I will call this meeting to order. All that are able, please rise and join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I request a roll call for attendance.
Brianna Besleck.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here.
Are there any revisions to the agenda that any members would like to make, propose? Hearing done.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Just a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, moving on. We will move on to the administrative reports and we will hear from.
Yes. All right, so we have the WASB convention coming up and there's the voting portion later, but for those of you who've never been a part, so all of the delegates come to this massive ballroom and it's set up similarly to our meetings where school boards can say to their delegate, you know, please ask this question, or we have, want to know more about this, or share our opinion on this. And so they'll have various mics set up throughout the ballroom where then the delegates can come and share what their board wants to have the others hear. There's an opportunity for somebody to say, hey, we've had a lot of conversation, can we bring it to a vote? But most of the times, people are very respectful in what they're sharing and giving time for everybody to say what they want. So in Board Docs, there has been the upload of all of the different resolutions that are being presented this year. Just kind of to give you some background, last year there were 10, this year I believe there are 19. So it kind of just varies year by year by what the districts present and would like them to consider. So yeah, I ask if you have anything you'd like for me to take as our delegate to the meeting. I'm happy to share opinions or, I don't know if I can answer questions, I can try. I've done it one year, but not an expert.
Well, there were some very good additions or whatever you want to call them here. I did have a question on transportation. One of the items talked about supporting rural transportation for schools or high-cost transportation in rural areas. And my question is more, and I know people get rides to school, but if, is the question, is the issue that we're not supporting high cost, or we are and we just want to keep it?
Typically, that applies to more of the rural districts, especially up north when they're covering a number of square miles. So for us, it doesn't really apply, but as I said, you know, up in those northern counties where the buses are traveling and they've got, you know, again, a lot, a large number of square miles for their district. Those districts are advocating for additional transportation aid to cover those costs. Unfortunately, like I said, we're not in that situation here.
That's good to know, thanks.
Yeah, I did have some thoughts on several of the resolutions here. This is, the first one is in Resolution 2317 on page 10. It's, these are, there's a whole bunch of like small resolutions within umbrella of one. This is 4.635, talking about supporting licensing clinical counselors so the schools can employ clinical counselors to provide mental health services to students. And I guess the concern I had with that is that in a school, school setting, it's a completely different system as I understand it, that school psychologists and school counselors operate under compared to what clinical counselors operate under. And simply allowing licensing clinical counselors to do the job of school psychologist is not necessarily a good idea. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I don't have enough information, you know, specifically about this resolution. I think there's been a greater emphasis by the School Board Association to, I think, make licensing a little bit easier. So I, and I could be wrong about that, I don't know if it's coming from that lens, knowing that it is difficult to hire school psychs and school counselors are in short supplies. So again, you know, we haven't been in that situation, but then when you look statewide, again, at the northern districts, you know, north of Wausau, when they're really trying to look for more flexibilities, perhaps that's why, but that's good feedback, I think, for Brianna to, you know, bring to the delegate council as far as if there are concerns about that. And you might hear more from some of those other delegates if that's the rationale.
Yeah, and lots of times, like, people will bring questions and then, I was trying to look up, they don't have it in order here as nicely as they do here, but trying to correlate the, to see, they have a little bit more of a rationale we can look through too. But then their delegate would stand up and then possibly answer some of those questions that people might have throughout the whole assembly. So definitely something that, if I can't find it in here, an answer for you before we leave, then I can ask when we get there.
Okay, thank you. Under the same number 17, 4.65 on page 11, supporting legislation that would require teachers to pass a state competency exam. I guess the questions I had about that were that whether there's evidence that whatever this competency exam is, is an accurate predictor of teaching performance? And would it only be part of the evaluation or are there other licensing requirements other than this one competency exam?
Yeah, I hate to say it, I'm not exactly where WASB is going with that resolution just because I follow more on the DPI side of things. I typically, what they're trying to do is make some of the licensure pathways easier for teachers and not add additional restrictions to that. So I haven't heard honestly much about the competency exam. I mean, right now, teachers are required to take the praxis and still required to take the FORT. So most of what I've been reading about is trying to ease up some of the restrictions on the FORT, which is the foundations of reading test, especially for those trying to get a special ed license. So I really have not heard a lot about this resolution at all.
And then 4.8 on the same page, evaluations. The supporting efforts of school districts to systematically and periodically evaluate and compensate teachers, administrators, and support staff members based on performance. I guess the questions I had about that is, and how, how the evaluation is done and is there any teacher involvement in that process? I guess that there, in something like that, there used to be involvement to the union, but has that changed after Act 10?
Yeah, that's teacher evaluation and administrator evaluation, it's all been driven by the DPI. So we haven't had really, I shouldn't say a lot of flexibility in there because it is now starting to allow some flexibilities where it makes a little bit more sense with how we evaluate. I know we're doing the rapid cycle evaluation, which means instead of the one long formal evaluation, now the principals are going in six times a year and seeing, you know, maybe 15 minutes of a lesson. So you see that change over time. But prior to this, there really hasn't been a lot of teacher involvement, I would say, nor even a lot of administrative voice in how that's administered by the DPI.
And Brianna, can you clarify, because you've done it last year, and I did the COVID year, which was a goofy one, but are these recommend, I mean, do these necessarily, when they recommend it, do they become DPI regulations or are they just positions that the School Board Association, WASB or WASBA recommends DPI to take up?
Yeah, so that's kind of like their stance in which when they go to share their thoughts and opinions and really advocate for what the districts feel is important, this is kind of the information that they take on that.
Right, so I mean, in the case of any kind of teacher licensing or evaluation, that's in state statute. Any kind of rural funding for busing, they'd be advocating, you know, when they, they put the budget together as far as what they're going to advocate for. So you're right, even though WASB can say this is what we would like, it doesn't necessarily mean that those changes are going to go into effect, especially if the legislators have to change a statute on that.
Because like the evaluations with teacher are connected to student performance, I think that's connected to federal dollars as well. Is that correct? Like when, no child left behind, and then the race to the top and all those things, that's when a lot of this was redone to comply with federal government to get that fund, that funding. I was going to comment on that same one, Kirk. I know that it says that they're going to repeal and recreate and we don't have the original wording there, Brianna. So do you have access to the original?
Can you tell me which one you're on?
Policy number? So all of the 4.6, 4.61?
All of them together.
All of those ones say repeal and create, so we don't see what the original wording was? Or where we?
So I think we all have the same information.
Well, because like, there's some of them where they, they have it like track changes, where you can see what they're, they're inserting and what they're deleting. And then you're right, these are just, because, are just simply the new version and we don't know what they started with.
There is a, I know they have the booklet. I would have to play around on their website to see if I could find it, if it's even available on there, but they do like always have like, here's the booklet of all the resolutions we've had in the past. So yes, they are somewhere, but I have what you have, so I don't have anything more.
Because I guess my concern with those ones as well of, of the School Board Association having that position to base performance on student test scores and things like that is, you know, even just personally as a teacher having taught for 15 years, I'm realizing now that some of the strategies I was told to use in the classroom are not best practice. And, you know, so teachers are put in a position where they're, they're being told to do certain things and there's performance that's happening or lack of performance and that's not necessarily on the teacher, in my opinion. And then again, like some, some students have access to tutoring and things like that and that's affecting students' test scores or just, we all know kids come into the school district and at different places and so I'm just very hesitant to tie any evaluation system and pay and things like that to teacher to student test scores. So if that's a part of the conversation at all.
Okay.
And then lastly, I had just a question about, I need to find it here. There it is. Resolution 2310 on page 5. I was confused about, in the create section, it says supports legislation to provide all teaching licensed applicants with an alternative pathway. And then in the rationale, it talks about, okay, I think I may have answered my own question here, that they're, they're supporting legislation to provide an alternative pathway for all teaching applicants and state licensing statutes have been amended to provide an alternative pathway for only special education teachers. So I think I answered my own question.
Is there any other things? I know we will come to the action item part that, that we will authorize Brianna to vote however she seems fit, but if there's any other questions you would want her to take to the board, the conference?
Maybe, and it already may be available, but what we've talked about is we don't really know what the original piece is.
I wrote that down to request maybe each district.
To make it easier, easier to find.
All right, is there anything else? All right, moving on. Community conversations. Tanya, myself, Megan, and Drew Hawick and Debbie Brewster had a meeting on January 3rd. This was a regarding what next steps we will be doing or propose to do or information about following the defeat of the referendum. And it was a, one, it was a good meeting and a lot of information was presented. They, and they are proposing to have, their thoughts are maybe in a step forward would be to have these CA, whatever.
Just call them like a community advisory.
Community advisory groups. And where the board would develop criteria for this community group to say, this is what we, like, what we would like in a new school or what we need in a new building. And then this community group, which would be made up of all aspects, parents with kids, parents without kids, seniors, staff, seniors in the community and staff, and it would represent all the different groups of Lake Mills. And then provide, have, give them the charge to come up with the solution that they would recommend down the road to have the board take or not take. So that's what they propose. And it was, I mean, and they would, they, they would lead the meeting like they, the strategic planning sessions would, they, they would lead the meeting as such. And whether we participated as members or sit to the side or, but the community group would make recommendations to the board. So that's kind of a summary of what they have done and.
Yeah, I like the fact, I mean, we talked at length about, you know, just providing the information that a lot of these initial sessions are learning sessions. So you pick a topic and you talk either about, you know, 4K or you talk about enrollment, you learn about finance, you learn, you know, so you're learning about, you know, kind of all the stuff that we know already, but being able to inform the community about kind of all the inner workings of the district so that by the time they start really looking at the facility needs, they've got all that background information, they have a chance to ask questions that are specifically driven from those informational sessions. So then as they go forward and start exploring the options, then they've got all that information at hand as well. And, you know, so he really hit home about, you know, just really the transparency of everything, having all the meetings, you know, recorded and on the internet for anybody to be able to come and watch after the fact. And really not limiting the number of people that would participate, you know, he said that, I think when they started out, they were, you know, had 80 and it kind of went down to 50 and then, you know, finally down to 40. But, but it was a commitment on these participants' part that you are committing to all these meetings because you need to have all of this information going on so that when you get to that point, that you have the recommendation to make to the board that you've been a part of this whole process. And they also talked about having kind of like the, the bigger plan of what you'd like and then kind of the, the plan that you could live with and then, you know, you hand that off to the board. But at least there's been a lot of community involvement throughout. So I think it's a good opportunity to really hear everybody's voices. And I think it's also a good opportunity for our residents really to, to kind of see some of the issues that we're facing as well firsthand, so.
It does seem like a very thorough.
Yeah.
Process here, really nice. I did have a question on, in, in the doc, in the meeting notes, I think, there was mention of a base plan and comprehensive plan. Can you tell us if you know the?
So that's a little bit what I was kind of alluding to. So, you know, the comprehensive plan, if you're going to do everything, they brought up, I think, the example of, of the pool in DeForest. Like they would like to have a pool as part of that plan, but then once that gets handed over into the board's hands, really looking at what's going to pass, what's not going to pass, what makes, you know, sense with, with the dollar amount that you're going to. But, so then having kind of that other plan where it's like, yes, we, we can live with this plan, you know, so it's like, do you go for the gusto with everything, you know, or, or does, you know, do you allow the board to trim that back as well?
Sure. Thank you.
And we started talking about auditoriums and, you know, athletic fields and pools and things like that. That's sometimes a little bit of a harder, like, sell in the community, so.
I just like this idea because I feel like people want to be heard, need to be heard. We need to hear just more ideas so that we can be creative in how we solve the spaceship issues and things like that. And then the referendum that just went through, I mean, that was part of the, the long-range plan, but it was, what, 10 years ago now? I mean, it just, it's been, it's been a while. We have a lot of new community members, so it, so I feel like some people maybe felt like, where is this referendum coming from? They didn't necessarily know that that was part of the plan previously. And then with COVID and all the things that went along with that, it just kind of got drowned out a little bit and then it was like, oh, we're going to referendum. So I think it'll just be nice to get more voices heard and really be creative with how we can.
I think going in with an open mind. I mean, you know, not going back to, you know, our voters with the same plan, you know, so really listening and, I mean, we've got our folks from the rec department presenting on the senior center tonight. I mean, there's, there's more facility needs than just some of the classroom spaces that we are seeing in the district. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to examine facilities across the board and what are the priorities, what are the needs of the community as a whole. I, yeah, I'm excited about it. I think the other thing that I really didn't think about it till, till Drew Hawick brought it up was really taking a deep dive into that operational referendum as well, you know, really having people understand, you know, here's the utility costs, you know, to run a building. Here's, you know, we're, we're going into not a great budget year next year, you know, there's other things going on with our budget than just trying to offset the costs of a new facility. So I think the more involvement we have with the community is better. So I guess I think, I think maybe the failed referendum was an opportunity to do better here this next time around.
When the two of them kind of worked together in the other cities and whatnot on their things, did they feel like they had a good turnout and evenly distributed thoughts amongst? Or were they, did they feel like they were pulling teeth to get people?
She gave it an example that she said, they had a lot of volunteers, but all the volunteers lived in one neighborhood. And so really she went back and said like, it was like a little bit overly represented and just this particular neighborhood. So she just, you know, asked that, like, well, can we have these one or two people instead, you know, and, and then, you know, people were fine with that. I don't know if you could think of another example?
They specifically, when they had the open call or, and they would, they looked at the di, the digraphics of, of what, who, like, were there, were there people, young, with elementary school kids, with high school kids, with no kids? And they tried to narrow, I mean, narrow the group, granted they were 40, 80, 40, narrow the group to have representation from each of the various interests of the community. And so they, they did, they indicated they didn't have an issue. They had to, for that example, that street, that they just had to say, we'd love to have you all, but two can be represented and you guys, the rest of you can come watch and ask questions, but not necessarily.
Participate.
Participate. I think that's the great example that they gave is, you know, especially if you're a person that you want to be part of it, but you can't really commit to all the meetings that, they're open meetings. So, you know, anybody can sit and observe and watch what's going on as well, so you still feel like you're a part of that, you're still getting the firsthand knowledge, but maybe you're not, you know, sitting at the table, you know, having the same discussions or making the recommendations, but.
So would we have the opportunity then if we were to look at all of the people who asked to participate and we felt like maybe this population or this demographic or something was missing, that we would be able to maybe search someone out to fill that? Because I feel like even like way, way, way back when we first started all of this, there were just a few people, you know, who came to some of the things. And I would really like the community to get involved and so.
After the, after they said after the cold call, if they found out this, parents of middle schoolers were not well represented, then they would ask specific people within that demographic for that, so.
And what's the cost to the district for something like this, to have?
We don't know yet. So we wanted to bring it to the board here and then we'll, we'll go back and, and work through that with him.
And are there other people that we might reach out to about this or do we have a relationship with these people?
We didn't, so we, we did a little background work on that. I mean, initially, we reached out to Joe Schrader who facilitated our strategic plan. In my conversations with him, he said that really wasn't his area of expertise and he would have to do some work to get up to par because he does more strategic planning and things like that. As we, as I watched across the state, what was going on, I, I mean, and I knew of Drew because we had talked with him initially before the board election about facilitating some things with, you know, the school board, that he has done this in other districts, whether it was related to just strategic planning or these community conversations, sometimes it wasn't necessarily tied into a referendum. So he's got that expertise. I mean, not that there's a lot of facilitators around, he's somewhat local, which is also nice, but he's presented at several of our, the school board conventions. He'll be down there next week at the school board convention presenting again and at some of our superintendent conferences. So he's a very skilled facilitator. The part I liked and I thought, you know, even going forward, he talked about that he's facilitated a lot of these community conversations in, for the DeForest school district going way back several years. And Debbie Brewster, who is now retired from the, from the school district, there is our communications director and now working at the state level, really talked about that they've used Drew as a facilitator just when there's any major district decisions that have to be made, that it's always gone out to the community, that they've really solicited a lot of input. And then when they got to the point of looking at what the facility needs were, it wasn't a new process for the community because the community was used to engaging in this type of conversation. And I think in, in the Lake Mills, you know, area, I think that's, that's going to be key moving forward because there's, there's always a lot going on. People want to be part of the decision, they want to know the information that's out there. And I think doing something different and engaging a wider group of our community is going to be important to the school district and probably the city as well, moving forward with some of these key decisions.
Is there availability in the near future or is this something we would have to wait?
He, we talked about like, well, when would we start? Because we initially, you know, when we had talked with the school board, I was thinking like, well, let's get going right away in February. And so what they said is with not going to referendum until April of '24 potentially, and we're not saying for sure, we'd even go to, you know, referendum because that would be what the group would decide, that you really don't want a long period of time in between that. So kind of backing up, knowing that the school board would have to set the resolution to go to referendum no later than the end of July, that still gives you that other wider communication time, that they were looking at.
January.
Summer.
Before the end of January.
What did I say?
July.
Oh, July, yeah, sorry, January. That, they started in DeForest in early August, they felt like that was a little bit too tight of a timeline. So we, like I said, we just kind of kept the conversation at a high level so we could bring the information back, but we would work with them on, on the cost for, you know, the facilitator and then back mapping what would that timeline look like. You know, they were worried about, you know, not wanting to necessarily have a lot of meetings in summer. It's hard to have people commit over the summer months, so, so we didn't know if, I guess, you know, kind of getting the communication out, you know, postcards out to the community and I'll call, getting the advisory committee set before the end of the school year this year. the end of the school year this year, you know, so that we'd be ready to go. I think we're not starting completely from scratch because we had done a lot of communication for the last year and a half, and we don't, I don't know, we'd have to talk with them more just to see if that, like, beginning of August timeline would work. I think what they say, or Amy, they met every two weeks? I mean, it was an aggressive timeline.
Yeah. Two weeks for? For the big group?
Till through December, I think. It was a, so, yeah, it was a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
Aggressive timeline.
Yeah, the, the committee put a lot of, of work into that. So, so we just would have to, you know, touch base with him again, but he is available, he's really interested in, in working with us.
So I guess the next steps are, if you want to at least, we, the board, want to proceed with asking him, giving a cost, and then if, if.
Bring a contract back.
A contract, and then if that's approved, and then further just questions, then we can do it, then we can approve it or not approve it, or decide to go another way at future meetings, so. So if this plan looks like an option.
I think it's worth looking at for sure.
To, to get a cost from him. Okay. All right. Now, moving on, are there any other questions for that? Moving on to Liliana.
Hi, okay. So the first thing I'm just going to report on is how our sports are doing.
Oh, gotta turn it on.
Hi, sorry about that. The first thing I'm going to report on is how the sports are doing. So, starting off with boys' basketball, I asked some of them, and they said, we're doing okay, you know, winning some, losing some. But a little highlight is that Brady Benish, a freshman, just broke a school record, which was set in 2017. He scored 11 three-pointers in one game. Another shout-out for boys' basketball is that Coach Hicklin has just had 200 career wins. There is a game on Tuesday at Edgerton, and Thursday, we have our game at home versus Lakeside. Girls' basketball, Bella Pita has broke another school record for the number of rebounds in one game. They're having a really good season, and they have beat two undefeated number-one teams so far. They have a game on Tuesday at Lakeside and a game on Friday at home. In wrestling, they're just getting back from about a month off. At their Badger State meet at the Alliance Energy Center, Owen Burling placed fourth, Tommy Cassidy placed six, Ethan Evenson was seventh, and the team placed 17th overall. They have a meet this Saturday, and next Thursday, they have a wrestling meet up at home, up at the high school. And then going on to mainly, like, the whole school, it is finals week, so we're all, you know, feeling the pressure, feeling the stress, but we're getting through it. Link Crew is holding our annual cocoa and cramb for the freshmen after school, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then lastly, our NHS team has just decided to sign up for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Campaign. Jeremiah Legel, Casey Iverson, and myself are going to be the student visionaries or the leaders for our team. We will be going through a seven-week fundraising journey that's going to be taking off on the 24th of January. It consists of multiple events that we will be putting on as the NHS team in hopes to raise money and awareness for LLS. And at the end of these seven weeks, our team will be headed to a conference over in Madison, where all the teams from the area are going to compete in a last-minute competition to see who has raised the most money for the cause. And it's going to be a really exciting time for everyone involved, and we are really excited to gain lots of support from the community.
That's exciting, you'll have to hit me up. And just a quick, short story, so students that I've donated, that have participated in that, I've seen them continue that journey into college and still be part of that group. So it's really neat that you're doing that.
Yeah. It's very exciting. We're all very, very motivated and excited for it.
Good.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Okay, board reports. Dr. Olson, to introduce the Lake Mills Rec Department.
Yeah, I'll just quick go on to number two real quick, just a quick spring election. Amy Litcher is running unopposed for one seat that's open, so that's exciting, so not really any other new news to report about that. And then I am really ecstatic to introduce Ben Dayton and Jane Riedel from the rec department. And I asked, they're going to present overall on the rec department, but focus in a little bit more heavily on the senior center. I think sometimes people in the community don't realize that the senior center and the rec department is an arm of the school district, and they've been really, really busy doing, making a lot of changes, a lot of nice improvements in the senior center this year. So I wanted to give them a chance to showcase what they're doing.
Right, thank you. Thank you again for letting us come here and speak to you. It's, it's an exciting time here for the rec department, and I'm just going to kind of give you an overview of what our last year looked like, a snapshot of the 21, 22 school year. And there's some new faces up here, and just for the general public here as well. It's just a little bit about us. We have three major programming areas, one being like our, our rec programming, our community rec programming. And that really covers like top programs, adult and youth athletics, enrichment programs, free and paid events, and programs like that. Our second major area is our childcare program. And that, we offer two seasons roughly of care, but it's a year-round program. We've got our summer care, which we offer before and after care for summer school, and then we also after, we also offer full-day care for like non-school days throughout the summer as well, so. And then in addition to this, too, we've kind of got a crossover program that we piloted last year, and we're really going to get going this year, which is our non-school day adventure days is what we call it. So we're really excited for that, but last year is actually when we started it, so. And then last but not least, our latest add, which is the senior center, which we lovingly call Club 55. That program is also a year-round program, so we don't take much time off other than certain days. We offer daily programming as well as events, trips, and, and programs of that nature, so. Next slide. Oh, sorry, no. My apologies. We have three full-time staff in our rec area. We have a full-time childcare coordinator. We employ a lot of kids and adults through like reffing opportunities. So our seasonal and our part-time staff is, is pretty high, and that's because of all the support that we need to make programs run. Two of our staff members are certified park and rec professionals through the National Park and Recreation Association. And then we also, you're going to hear more about this later, we're really excited, but we're also an accredited senior center through the Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. And below here, you can also see our other professional affiliations, both nationally and then also statewide. So this is just kind of a snapshot of what our rec programs looked like this last year. We did see a major increase in numbers, and that's primarily because of coming off of the tail end of COVID or the pandemic. But we also really saw a huge bump in some of our programs where we kind of bordered, like, record-breaking numbers. Primarily soccer, our fall and spring soccer had ginormous numbers. We also had pretty big numbers in our flag football program as well. In addition to really solid numbers, we also added several brand-new programs. The adventure day program, which is what I talked about earlier, we added battle darts, a glow throw event on our disc golf course, learn to skate, and then a handful of other programs as well. So we, we were kind of expanding as well as just taking in the rush of folks coming back to play. Moving on to our childcare program, it was, it was a really refreshing start back into what was, what we felt was normal. We had several trips back on the docket again. We were able to go out of town quite a bit more this year. We went to the state park, you can see it with the, the kids having fun on top of the observation tower. We got to go to Sassy Cow and see some of the, the whatever farm life animals and others as well. During the school year, we started up with Amanda Warmuth. She joined our team in September, and she was a great addition to, to the team back last year. She is back with us again in an expanded role, so we're really blessed to have her on the team. But she has really kept it going and, and keeps the program moving strong. You can see here our monthly attendance numbers. We kind of average around that high four, or sorry, high 30s to 40 range. We really have 50 families or 50 kids on our roster, but between the fluctuations and the needs that people may have, that's where we see kind of the, the average dip. We have had a few days where we've bordered having every single kid in program come, but typically, it's, it's kind of in that, that high 30 range. And now I'm going to move, my, my part was really short and easy because we really want to celebrate the senior center and our seniors here, so we'll move on to that. And here's Jane Riedel.
Thank you. So it's been pretty exciting. Again, thank you for letting me talk on behalf of Club 55. And just a quick background, we have a little bit of an overview up there. Carol Burrows and Board, they brought the, well, had many meetings and many conversations to start up the senior center, and they started at the Congregational Church in the lower level of that. So they operated out of there for three years and then joined the rec department in 2019. So they've been under the rec department for three years also. So with the help of Carol and her Board, we really appreciate everything that they've done. So moving forward, we decided to get, well, let's go back to that. Programming, we have some essential services, like our foot care, blood pressure check. We do some Medicare and open enrollment presentations. We would like to bring in some more programming. One of them is multi-generational programming, and that is for our seniors to volunteer to help out at the elementary school and read and listen to the kids, help them in the reading program. So that's something we want to move forward with, but we haven't, like, put that into place yet. And then our numbers, we've been just kind of tracking how many people come through the door on a daily basis and then a monthly basis. So like, our annual is 5,828 visits we've had so far this year. We send out a weekly news blast, and we were doing a newsletter, but, so, right now, that email goes out to like 330-plus members. Now, on a average, like, we have had about a hun, over half of those attend any type of program, a daily, whether it's daily workouts, exercise program, or our picnics or Christmas party, whatever, we have more than half of them that actually attend Club 55 as individual members. Our Board members are up there, we have a co-presidents right now, Mary Ann Zwoska and Jan Gregg are doing a great job of being the co-presidents, helping us out. And we have Rich Vronik, who is our vice president at the time, Carol Burrows, our past president, who is now our secretary, and then our assistant secretary Kathleen O'Hern, and then Lester Smith and Marie Hoffman are in there. Of course, there were some more that were, have stepped down now, but that started it out with Carol, and we really appreciate all of them. So we put together a group with this accreditation team and decided to, so we just cut to the chase to get this done. We thought, we'll follow the Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers, they were represented at a conference that I went to, and we're like, okay, sounds great, let's hop on board with that. So they hold us to higher standards. They want us to write up all these policies and procedures, which I brought, along the book that we put together, and now this is one binder and there's two additional ones. But all of this information is all our policies and procedures that we worked really hard to get together and put in this. And part of it is if I or somebody else weren't around, they could pick up this binder and operate the senior center. So it's very beneficial. So we went to, well, we worked on this through COVID for two years, and then put this all together, put the policies together, submitted it to them. They approved us on August 12th of 2022 and presented us with this plan, saying that we are Wisconsin Senior Center WASC approved. So this will go up in our room at Arlac. And they also had some recommendations for us, which I will explain a little bit and then go into just a little bit of detail. But the recommendations that they had after, they liked our policies, everything was well-written, but their, their recommendations for one, a staff person, for a full-time staff director. And we have already accomplished that, so we have one full-time person now, well, me there now. The space needs, the current one-room space is not adequate. Space needs, space is needed for growing community and to provide multi-generational use. A multi-use facility is a win-win for all ages. Having space that is dedicated to us exclusively, so we don't have to set up and take down after each event, is very beneficial. So we're updating our room, and we applied for a grant, $5,000 matching grant from the Lake Mills Area Community Foundation. We were awarded that. We've already matched those matching funds and ordered the cab, the shelving. That shelving will put our puzzles and books and everything that we have, puzzle exchange and books where people can come and just grab a book. And I can't even tell you how many times this, these last two weeks that people have come in and taken, brought a bag in and taken a bag out. So it's, it's really a cool program. So stay tuned for the installation of those cabinets or shelving. We also are looking at buying some new chairs, some of the ones that we have are very heavy and the seniors can't move them once they're sitting in them, they're on a carpeted area. So we're trying a fundraising program called Buy a Chair, and we've had several people that have bought a chair, and they'll put a plaque on the back for whoever, or whatever they want that to say. We're also looking at flooring, which we haven't figured out quite yet, but we'll be doing some fundraising for that, so that our chairs will move easily and we can update that room. We are really happy to have that space. We get to use the whole building during the day, our hours from Monday through Friday from 10 to 3:00. And the workout rooms, I just showed a couple through today, very new to town, they don't know how to meet people, so they come in and they want to join the programs. Pickleball's been a big thing, too, in the gym. Lots of people know how to play, or, and there's a lot of new people, too. So with all of the new programming and stuff, it's a great way to meet people. We had one lady going through some really hard, harsh medical issues, and she, all she did was walk in and start talking to one of the other ladies, and pretty soon they're out to lunch and having fun. So it's a great place for them to meet, great for socializing, and we do get to use a lot of the building. So the next, the third thing they said was fund, fund development, and their recommendation was fundraising activities to help increase revenue, as well as finding donors to continue to provide quality programs. We have some essential services now, like the foot care and blood pressure. We've also had brain boost classes, aging mastery program through the ADRC. And again, we'd like to work with the elementary school and try and get some of that programming in as well. So we'd like continued support and have an updated building. It's time to recognize our seniors. I know that we do a lot for our kids and stuff, but we're also looking at the seniors, and we'd like to start recognizing them. So we have set some goals, six goals up there, as you can see. We're starting to work on a lot of that. This board is ready to jump in and, and get us moving. So our volunteer programs, of course, lifelong learning opportunities, but we are so happy to be under the school district and the rec department that, moving forward. Couple of pictures up there with our Christmas party and. Couple of pictures up there with our Christmas party and singing the Twelve Days of Christmas. And it was so exciting, it was just a blast. Um, our cardio drumming up there, some of you may have seen us in the parade and hopefully we'll have more this year, but it was a lot of fun too. So thank you for all of that. Um, feel free to come down and we welcome you to walk through the building or join in any one of our programs and see what we're doing during the day. And, um, we'd also like you to invite you on February fourteenth for Valentine's Day. We are going to have a retirement celebration for Carol Burrows. So come on down and enjoy that. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I'd like to just publicly recognize Carol since she's in the audience for, um, just her years of dedication and, and just your care of how you've helped grow Club Fifty-Five alongside Jane. And we just really appreciate all that you've done for the district and Club Fifty-Five. So thank, I feel like I need to give a little round of applause.
Thank you to both of you.
Are there, are there, are there?
Sorry.
Is there a fee to join Club Fifty-Five? Like for the rec, no, it's free? Okay.
Yeah, it's free. We, uh, there are various models of, for senior centers of how to operate. Some are free, um, and then others are paid, but typically that fee is very minimal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, are you seeing any, um, interesting trends, um, in recreational programming nationally?
Yeah, um, I think one which is coming to Lake Mill, well, it's already here. Um, a lot of younger adults are moving towards pickleball. I mean, that's, it's always been around, it's kind of been a sport to play, but, uh, it's really picking up steam there. Um, and so we've seen a lot of that, um, come around. Additionally, uh, the things that we're looking for or trying to kind of shift towards now would be some of those non-traditional sports or non-traditional activities. I don't want to say sports, um, specifically, but, um, some which we do have a high school activity, uh, or a high school club, uh, for esports. Um, and that's something that we've kind of been dabbling in and trying to figure out how we could do something along those lines, but introducing that at a younger age, um, as well. So there's, there are some trends, um, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're really trying to look at what are we looking to move towards going to the future?
Sure.
Um, I had a question or a few. Uh, in the WASC, or WASC, how many other of the senior centers were run by the cities or run by the school districts?
Ooh, that's a good question. I don't know. Um, I know going to the conference, there are, the ones that I talked to, there are a handful both ways. Um, there are several that are through the school district now, never used to be, but, um, and then most of them are through the city. But there are others that are run through their school district.
Do you know of others in the area, Jefferson County, Dodge County, Dane, that are run by schools?
Menominee Falls has one that, um, they actually have, their senior center is attached to like an elementary school. Um, I know that of a handful, it's more towards that Milwaukee area.
Okay.
Um, but either they partner with a city organization or they have programming specifically towards seniors, um, and then offer a space.
Okay.
But I can get you, I mean, if that's what you're looking.
I, I mean, I, yes, it would be ben- I mean, whether it's the next meeting, yeah, it would be interesting to see.
Okay.
Or, or for the next one. Also, coming back to the, the slide about what the, the programs that you ran, the recreation programs, um, how many are, how many are continuing as far as like youth athletics, um, are, that are going to be continuing through the rec department or continuing through, say, clubs, like a baseball club or something like that?
Sure. So, um, just recently, uh, we've had conversations with specifically a baseball. Um, there was the teener program, which is like seventh and eighth grade, uh, program. Uh, in conversations about that, we, we, there's, it's getting to be to a point where it's more of a feeder program. And so having a club really control that with the high school coach heavily involved in the club, uh, that one made sense. Uh, additionally, we're transfer, transferring the, uh, tackle football program over to the football club as well.
Is the girls' and boys' basketball transferring to those clubs as well?
Um, girls' basketball started at a club as well. And so, um, just by default, we are, we're getting out of that area, uh, because they have, they offer teams from eighth grade through fourth or third, I believe. Uh, as far as the boys' basketball club, there, we're still operating kind of the same way that we have where we're both kind of taking on, uh, a portion of the, of the load per se and, and, uh, co-op-ing.
Okay. And then last question for me, how mu- you, you mentioned this new staff, how many full-time staff does the rec department have?
So currently we have four full-time staff. Uh, myself as the director, uh, Jane as a rec supervisor, she handles adult rec and then also senior center programming. Uh, Brooke Fond is in the office with me. She's really kind of moved more into, um, the rec programming side as well, uh, including, uh, handing some of our, um, like our marketing materials as well. And then, um, Amanda Warmuth, which is our childcare coordinator.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on. Uh, Erin with the Director of Learning and Instruction, new course proposal.
Good evening. Um, we have one new course proposal for this upcoming school year. So this is for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, Mr. Murray, the art teacher at the high school, is proposing advanced three-D design. And what that will mean is that students who have already completed coursework in sculpture or ceramics will be able to take like the next level up. Um, the one great thing about this proposal is that it doesn't cost us more money, it doesn't ca- create like a new staff need, but what it does do is it offers an opportunity for students to extend their learning further. Um, so while those intro levels really focus on what are the skills it takes to, to sculpt and to really, you know, do what they need to do with their ceramics projects, the next piece is refining those skills and really focuses on their creative expression. Um, and there are a handful of students who have been asking for this type of opportunity. And so he is going to write the curriculum in a way that he can offer it while, like during his other, so like if I want to extend in sculpture, I can be placed in a sculpture class. I can still, like the input that he's giving, the, the mini lessons that he's teaching still apply, but my project is going to be different. It's going to be more involved, it's going to be more independent, um, and something that really builds on what that student maybe needs to work on too. Like I said, it, to me, it was when he approached me about it, it seemed almost like a no-brainer. Again, it's a new opportunity for students that doesn't cause us to have to add a teaching position.
Are there any questions?
I love that it was within the class because then I think it's like the, ooh, I see what you're doing and that's exciting for me to do too. Soon I will be there. I thought that was cool.
I think there's a really good opportunity for like that mentorship piece too, like, oh, you're struggling with that? Here I can, you know, like some of that peer-to-peer learning.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right. Has anyone signed up for the comments? Okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Does any board member have any of the consent agenda that, items that they would like to pull out? All right. This, then this month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following. The December twelfth regular meeting minutes, the December's treasures report and vouchers and invoices, and the personnel report. Do I have a motion? Ooh, is that everything? Yep. All right.
I'll move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion or questions? All right, then I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Letcher?
Aye. All right, on to the action items. Open enrollment seats. Uh, Tony, would you like to kind of summarize?
Sure. So, um, per state statute, each school district in Wisconsin has to set the number of open, of open enrollment seats, um, at their January board meeting. You can choose to set no limits, um, at that. We don't because of staffing and space, um, restrictions that we have in the districts. So, um, based off of our class size guidelines, um, I have a chart with the recommended number of openings. Now, mind you, that's the total number of openings that, um, not including any type of move-ins. So, um, actually I worked with Roseanne, um, quite a bit back and forth, who is no longer our registrar, but has a long history of this and also went back into our database through DPI to look at open enrollment trends over the past few years to see where, where we really needed to be concerned, where you get the most influx of open enrollment. That tends to be at those primary levels. Four K and kindergarten tend to be the highest open enrollment, um, numbers. So looking at all of that, I mean, worst-case scenario, we have that number of open enrollment students and move-ins and we'd have to worry about, um, you know, class sizes. That, that rarely does happen. Last year, we tended to have, um, a high number of open enrollment and move-ins in the third grade, um, classroom level is a little bit of a, a anomaly. Um, but for the most part, um, by setting some limits, it's not allowing us to just have, you know, kind of throw caution to the wind and, um, right now trying to basically maintain five sections at each grade level across the board, which averages out to be about a hundred and twenty-five students or so per class, a little bit less than that in the lower grades. If these seats are not taken, so actually I should go back and explain, um, somewhat. If you set these limits now in January, that actually, um, closes off any type of alternative open enrollment for the rest of the school year as well because it, it goes into effect immediately. If by, um, I don't remember the exact date, in June, if, if these spaces, um, were filled or not filled, what it does is it opens it up to any other applicants, um, after that deadline. If we've got space, then we can choose to take any of those applications outside of the open enrollment period, which ends at the end of April. So I would say right now, just looking at historical trends, I feel, um, pretty confident with this. I know the one notation that I did make is, um, something we do need to address is the size of our four K class, which looks odd because I do have five open enrollment spaces there. But we are, uh, going back to several years ago, there should have been a fifth section of four K all along to run numbers of, of twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, uh, four-year-olds in a four K class is almost unheard of. So right now, um, you know, we're, we're, we're starting to work on enrollment for the, the next year. We, we don't have, you know, really a good handle on how many four Kers we have. We've approximated, you know, estimated that at about eighty-five right now. But even when you split that, um, four ways, that's twenty-two students per class. So today I was in the four K section over at the Methodist Church and there's twenty-one four-year-olds in that classroom. I mean, we always kind of joke around that if you've ever like babysat, um, sometimes two or three kids babysitting for is enough. I mean, to have twenty-one four-year-olds in a classroom is a lot. So I mean, there we've got one teacher and two para-professionals and, um, there's a lot of little needs to go around when you're trying to provide some small group instruction. So I know we've got space issues, so even if we want to add a, a fifth section, I don't know where we would necessarily go with that right now, but currently we're projecting about twenty-two students in each one of the four sections of four K. We've, though, the class section that we've closed off is, um, next year's fourth grade class. Those class sizes are already at twenty-five per section. And again, if you walk through any of those classrooms, you could barely walk through, it really probably should be six sections. Um, but again, there's no space to expand that to six sections. So that is my recommendation for open enrollment seats.
Can I ask, when you look at your open enrollment numbers, is it strictly just a number or do we ever take into a calculation like this grade level, we've already have X amount of needs, whether it be academically, socially, uh, behaviorally, whatever? Do we ever account for that or is it just strictly a number?
We do. I mean, when we expanded the one, um, section this year to six sections, we did take that into account. I mean, and those are our own students. So we could look at closing off, um, you know, a section if we thought we had, you know, we wanted to purposely keep those, um, class sizes really small due to the amount of needs that we see in a class. So it's really up to the district's discretion. You just can't be arbitrary with your reasons because otherwise parents could come back and appeal a denial to an open enrollment. So you do have to have, um, rationale behind that decision going through your, your class size projections, you know, looking at, you know, the number of move-ins that you could have, you know, from now until the beginning of next school year, all those different factors.
I guess, can you explain again why we want five at four K then if we're already? Should we have that at zero?
We could have it at zero and, and not grow past eighty-five. I guess my concern is, um, then we're keep, typically, typically in a four K, in, in school districts, you have more four K sections than you do of the rest of the other sections of your grade level. Technically, we should be at six sections of four K. When I, um, shared with you the class size numbers across Jefferson County and, and you can see that, I mean, even to have twenty students in a four K class is a little bit on the high side. So, um, as Cambridge has fifteen students per section, Jefferson is anywhere from eleven to nineteen based on the site that they have. Watertown was higher at eighteen to twenty, Waterloo is higher at nineteen to twenty. Johnson Creek has fifteen to sixteen with a full-time aide. Fort Atkinson had six to eight with no, um, para. If they had a, a para professional in the classroom, then they had twelve to sixteen in a classroom. Marshall, um, their goal is seventeen to twenty. They were higher than that this year at, you know, averaging at twenty. They're also at a full-day program. So I think, you know, it's, um, I, I guess regardless of what happens, I think we need to take a long, a harder look at four K and, and what we're providing and, and what is our goal, is our goal to have, you know, one teacher, one para and still keep those numbers at a reasonable size, sixteen, seventeen, to be able to offer a robust, um, four K program. And I guess, I, I, my fear is keeping that number locked in at eighty-five, does that translate up into a smaller kindergarten class? This year it did, we didn't have space. So, and you can go back and look at any school district. Your, your enrollment in your district, you can, if, once students enter a four K, anywhere, open enrollment or in your own district, if you lose them in four K, you tend to lose them forever. So once they start somewhere else, you tend to not get those students back. So, um, we're seeing that a little bit, um, with, with St. Paul's, who does have more space than we do and lower class sizes. Um, real honestly, that's, uh, appealing to parents and their ability to offer a wraparound care. So, um, I guess I, I don't, I'd like, I'd like to find room somewhere, um, to be able to offer that, that other section.
Do we have time between now and fall to make another section or two and find space for four K if we approve to do?
Wendy and Erin are work, and Dom are working with us on that. We're looking at, um, you know, we're, we're even taking a good look at, at our sections at the Methodist Church, you know, is there some way to reconfigure that? Um, you know, do we look at changing up maybe how we deliver services in our early childhood program? Is that a more integrated program instead of a standalone program? So I know, uh, time is working against us. So I just had a conversation with Wendy before we got here, is that we, we need probably to wrap this up here in the next two weeks and have a recommendation, um, back to the board, um, as well for that. But I, I do think that not addressing four K has further enrollment implications for the district.
And I think too, if we decide to move to a full-day program, I think that's very enticing for families. And I said, so if that brings in numbers with four K and we add a section And I said, so if that brings in numbers with 4K and we add a section with that, I then also look at some of these other ones that are pretty close, like with their open enrollment numbers, to either like extending that ratio or then like being at capacity and do we have the space to keep that consistently going year after year after year? I mean, even into the middle school, like that's my concern is, I mean, not just with 4K, but you look at some of the other lines where our open enrollment numbers are a little bit higher, but then if you compare that to the ratio that's there and then also into like, say, six sections, well, then if you were to add a whole nother group, like do we just really, I mean, we already have said a million times, we don't have space. Like, that's my concern. Like, obviously, that's worst-case scenario, but to have that happen and then what do you do with the kids?
I mean, ideally, we would have six sections of 4K and five sections of every other grade level up through eighth grade. I mean, right now, with our capacity, that would keep us pretty solidly at 1,600 students across the board. I mean, at that point, if you got to that, you could really close out any type of open enrollment and try to hold the line on that. But I agree, it's hard when you've got a section of, you know, we've got six sections in one grade level, and we've got a smaller class where it's only four sections. It makes it really hard to build out a master schedule. It also makes staffing really hard because you're either looping a teacher up or you're moving a teacher down a grade level. And we're facing some of that with kind of a big bubble and a little bubble at the same time. So, it's easier to kind of keep things standard across the board. So, that's, I think, what we're attempting to do with limiting open enrollment in some grades and opening it up in others, you know, to see where we can.
So, if it would be ideally for us to kind of flatline per se the numbers, would it make sense to change that second grade number? Because I feel like that's already a high-sectioned grade level and then also has a high-sectioned amount of openings as well.
Talking about the 11.
That is a consideration, actually, and I talked about that as well, is maybe closing off that, that second grade class. We definitely could make that revision so that class does not get any bigger whatsoever. And again, that's a class, that six-section class, next year, that, you know, still, there's some needs there as well.
The projected enrollment too, is that factoring in a handful of kids who are going to move into new homes being built or?
It's not.
It's not?
Nope.
Okay.
Would you like me to change the second grade limit to zero?
Yeah, how do you?
I think that concerns me the most. But then I think too, like, I know, how do you factor in these, I mean, what's being built over in Brookstone? And there are kids, so we can say no. So, then, you know, accommodating some of these potential incoming numbers, like then you look at that next year's third grade, right? We're already at 1 to 21, and if we could already have some in district and then we're potentially adding five more, like, how high does that bring our classroom? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, that's a valid point.
Where's the magic wand? I don't know.
Yeah. It's definitely a valid point.
Is there a proposed number for any of the grades that are different?
This has to be done tonight, correct?
Yes. Well, it has to be done by the end of January, but yeah, you'd have to reconvene at another board meeting. You can make, I mean, typically, like I said, normally, I'd come in with a, probably a more solid proposal, but you're right, it's just our enrollment's kind of been up and down at different grade levels. It was a little trickier, I would say, than normal. I've spent more time on this than I normally spend on enrollment and then really just trying to kind of level things off in each one of the grade levels. But you're right, that, that next year's second grade class presents a little bit of an issue because it's, it's a six-section and, I mean, so I guess you could look at it both ways. You'd have to lose quite a few students, I guess, for that to shift down to five sections. So, I'm looking at it like this is probably a six-section grade level all the way through eighth grade. We can absorb it a little bit easier when we get to the high school level. So, either we keep those class sizes at 19, which is, you know, low, and it's, it's low as you get up into the upper grades. Right now, 19 is a nice number going into second grade, but by the time you get in the third, fourth, fifth, that's, that's not a big class size at all. So, letting a couple of open enrollment students move in, I mean, could we have some move-ins, you know, from the community? Absolutely. We still tend to see that probably more on the lower level, that start. I mean, I'm even thinking throughout this past half of a year, I mean, we have it, every time you kind of gain one, you tend to lose one. You know, it's, it's, it's not like we've had this huge influx of students since the beginning of the school year that's going to alter our enrollment. I mean, we will get some in the summer. You'll tend to see students move into the district in the summer, but right. I mean, I think right now, it's dependent on, you know, that some of those apartments finishing up. Right now, we don't see a lot of houses for sale. If we were having a little bit, if the subdivision over on Mud Lake Road was building, I'd be more concerned.
I hesitate to tweak the numbers just given that you've worked on this, you have history of the district, you had no allocation, so I don't, I'm a little bit concerned, like you said, about the second grade. And then I understand your argument for 4K, having some space in there so that we can, you know, have families join our district. And so, I guess that's where I'm a little torn, to change the numbers. It's like, this is your work and you know the nitty-gritty of all this, so.
I mean, we're at the tipping point already for 4K. I mean, that's why I thought if, if we're going to add a fifth section, let's add a fifth section and actually put those class sizes where they should be. It's just the space is what we're furtively working on.
So, I guess, is it possible to potentially adjust that second grade number and then foreseeing what 4K brings us that year and then potentially maybe projecting what it is once they get to that third and fourth grade level in the coming years to decide like, okay, maybe we have enough space then to put an open enrollment, more open enrollment seats for them? You know, if we were to make their class sizes a little bit bigger or adjust a little bit more, you know, as they're older and can take more kids in their room, but to kind of level them off this year?
Because you have to set the enrollment seats every year. So, I mean, this year, still with them being, going into second grade, we could set that at zero and then next year, again, reevaluate that. And when, like you said, when class sizes are generally larger from third grade on up, that's.
Because I guess when you do the projected enrollment, do you include the current open-enrolled kiddos in there?
Yes. Yep. Because once they're open enrolled, they're.
They're in there.
They're open enrolled, yeah.
So, just to clarify too, these are max numbers, but if someone applies and we have space and we deny them?
Nope.
Can't deny.
As long as, no, as long as you say that we have five seats, you, there's.
So, we can't and obviously say, oh, never mind, the numbers are going to, okay.
Once they're in there, yeah.
Okay.
But you can do it the other way. You can say, we're closing it at zero and then, oh, we don't, we realize that no new third graders move to the district, we can add.
Not till summer.
Not till summer.
So, we're locked in on what we decide tonight.
Mm-hmm. So, is, again, is there a proposal? Is there a proposed motion?
I mean, if you, if you want me to change that second grade, those class seats to zero, I mean, you can make that motion to accept it as presented with the revision to the second grade, but set the second grade open enrollment seats to zero if that's, I, like I said, I debated that one back and forth. I am fine with that, that change for this year. Like I said, you've got the opportunity, you know, late in summer if.
Is, just one other question for me. For, in the special education area, for speech and OT, our capacity is for like OT 45, yet our enrollment projection is 74. Is that really just a function of, so to speak, outsourcing?
So, I mean, that's the whole case. So, I mean, when you look at speech and occupational therapy and some of those residual services, you know, they're not meeting with those students every day. They might have, you know, 45 minutes a week, you know, in an IEP, so they might see this, you know, the students for speech, you know, two or three times a week for 15 minutes apiece. So, I mean, it's still, those numbers are definitely high, you know, for sure, but, but right, it's based on the IEP minutes for the students as well. So, it's a high number of students. They do see, speech in OT, see a lot of students during the course of the week.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the argument to drop second grade to zero as opposed to dropping it to like five?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too, like.
Lower that?
Yeah.
Which one are you talking about?
The second grade section rather than having it at 11. You were saying dropping it to zero.
Yeah. We could, that'd be fine.
Is there like any?
No, not necessarily.
Just gives a little more.
Allows some open enrollment at least, but not.
So, is the proposed of dropping the second grade from 11 to five and keeping all the other open enrollment seats as presented?
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be what I would.
Then I will make the motion of, just to keep it straight, grade two, new open enrollment seats at, from 11 to five, down to five, and then keep all the other numbers as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, then I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right. For the new high school course proposal as presented by Erin, do I have a motion?
I'll move the board approve the advanced 3D design course proposal at the Lake Mills High School.
Second.
Any, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, moving on. Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolutions. Is there a motion?
I move the board give Ms. Beslik the latitude to vote on the Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolutions at the 2023 Wisconsin State Education Convention.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. Okay, Wisconsin Public Education Network action item. This is an annual partnership with the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Schools and supports the statewide coalition to support strong public schools through the Wisconsin Public Education Network.
I guess I can just say that I appreciate the things that they do for us as board members, the presentations that they offer, the different emails that they send to keep us in the loop and different things, and so I can appreciate their work and the dollars that we're putting towards that work and much more.
Yeah, I would agree with.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the board approve the renewal of the Wisconsin Public Education Network.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call motion, or a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. Okay, change of, in March, school board meeting date due to a convention.
Yeah, and I apologize because I know I asked you for this last year, just because I'm on the Women Leading Wisconsin Board and planning for all of this. I tell them each year when they set the date that that's my board meeting date and I get kind of overruled because that's nobody else's board meeting date. So, just to avoid having to drive back from the conference, I'm just asking to move it to the third Monday. I know I've talked with Amy about when we set the board calendar here in April at the reorg meeting, that maybe the, the third Monday might be a little bit easier flow with our board meetings regardless, but that's, that's a topic for the reorg meeting.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move the board change the date of the regular business meeting of the school board to March 20th, 2023.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, moving on to the gifts.
I'll move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of our students and programs in the Lake Mills Area School District. $100 donation from Ryan and Carol Watson to the school's district's food pantry, The Mill. $100 anonymous donation to the school district's food pantry, The Mill. A $200 donation from Matthew and Catherine Javna, sorry, for food service accounts, and a $5,000 donation from Security Glass Block for the elementary school to be used as needed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
As always, we are happy and thankful for the community's support of the schools. All right. Hearing none, no other discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
I thought there was an echo.
No, I just thought it was you. All right. With that, we are done with our action items and we will move on to the upcoming board agenda items. Reading those, the State Education Convention Discussion for our February 13th meeting, Community Conversations with Drew Horwick, and have further information from them. Jedi Consortium agreed agreement, March 22nd, the WASB Day at the Capitol, and Summer School Wages.
Yeah, just, I kind of put that, the WASB Day at the Capitol, just kind of keep it on your radar. You'll start seeing that in your, your emails, I think, if you're available to do that. I would also participate with that. It's a great day to actually meet with your own, our own legislators right at the Capitol in their offices and just do some advocacy for the school district, especially with what we see across the state with the upcoming budgets for next year.
Okay. Is there anything else to be added? All right. Hearing none, I request a motion to move to executive session.
I'll move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses 1 CE and F, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifics, specifically, parentheses A, approval of executive session minutes, parentheses B, district administrators' evaluation, and parentheses C, middle manager contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Then, hearing others' discussion, then we need a roll call vote on this.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, we are now in executive session.